Meeting in order, start with the pledge of allegiance. I don't have a secretary to make, so I might do my best. Roll call, so what?
Here.
Well, Claire here, Anthony in absent, so. You have a floor. Need an approval of the agenda, everybody's got the agenda?
I'll make the proof, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda that you wanted.
What's that? Motion Anthony, ten. I'll pay the say I. Votes? Motion carries. I would comment, hold on, give me a second, I have a feeling I might need something. I'm better taken than I am right. Okay, if y'all go in the same order that you did last time here, I don't know if you knew names.
Who went first?
Uh, Phyllis. Right?
Right.
See? This just happened to be one that I, in old public comments that I've been typing a little bit on. Uh, public comment, anybody have anything you want to say?
I do.
Okay.
First of all, did I miss the survey you've been put out about short-term rentals?
No, you did not.
You haven't put it out, huh?
I'll answer that question in a minute.
Okay. And my other question is, is the email address for you on the website correct? Because I sent you an email September thirteenth and I have not heard back.
I don't know. Want to check? It's, uh...
It's right up there, I think, and I think it was, it said, and that thing didn't come back, so I knew you must have got it. It was PC Chair.
Yeah.
At Caledonia.net.
Yeah, because I haven't...
That's where I sent you the email.
Yeah, because I have them forwarded to my email address, my personal email, so that I get them and don't miss them.
Well, you must miss mine.
Well, I will, I will definitely go look, so.
Well, maybe you have my name, so let's throw it out.
I will, I'll go in there and look at it, so. In fact, I, now that you mention that, I haven't received an email in a little while, so. Anything else?
I don't.
Anything else?
No, just wanted, wanted to know if you got my email, why I hadn't heard back from you.
Well, yeah, you didn't, because I didn't, so I apologize. I will, uh, figure that out.
I'm not on your list, so, but I wanted to make a public comment.
Oh, that's all right, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Mike Dodson, and I live at five fifteen Oak Street. And I sent an email to Cindy and copied Dan.
Yep.
It was about short-term rentals. So, our initial feel, I live, I live, there's a, there's a span of ten houses and there just seems to be popping up all over the place. We have three right now in the span of ten houses, and my understanding is there's going to be another one that's going to be opening up in the spring. So we'll have four verbos inside the ten houses, right on Oak Street. So my concern is this, all right, we get new neighbors weekly, I have one right next door. I've had people in my yard, I've had people on my lake deck, I've had people swinging in my handbag, I've had cars drive across my roadside yard. Snowmobilers come right across the yard, it's insane. I mean, you have to just see it to believe it. So I just think that if you're going to have verbos, there has to be some kind of regulations or some kind of criteria on the homeowner to be, to tell their occupants, "Look, you guys, these are the rules, follow the rules," and there has to be some kind of a system set up where we can call somebody or file a complaint if they start violating all this stuff and invading our privacy, it's just getting ridiculous. We've had verbal parties past nine thirty, decks full lit up, music blaring, sixty to eighty decibels, they don't care, they're only there for three or four days. If, I mean, if they were our neighbors, our neighbors are all very cognizant and conscious of everybody around them. So usually people have their stuff turned down and lights off at nine thirty, not these verbos. And I'm not saying it's all the verbos, it's just some of them. The overall appearance, I mean, you'd have to come out to see the, my next door neighbor right now, but she's had a roof project in progress since March. It's a steel roof project. There's like ladders up on the roof, and there's steel slats laying all over her front yard with edges exposed, that can't be safe. It's just insane. I mean, there's kids coming in those rentals, I just think there has to be some kind of guidelines or some kind of, um, system in place where there's some quality constraint to these verbos. So, really, that's, I mean, I have a few more things I could throw out there, but my, my concern is, and my wife and I were concerned that the verbos are just starting to take over. Like I said, we'll have four inside of ten houses.
Actually, you don't know about the other levels, five now.
Five, so five inside of ten houses.
And there's only two of us that live here full-time. They're outnumbering your...
The neighbors care about the Hubbard Lake area, but these verbal people, they're just here, they're transient, three or four days, you know, five days. And for the most part, I don't want to make it sound like all the verbos are like egregious and violating all these rules, but there are some that are just, they have no boundaries, they don't care. They figure, they figure they pay their money and they're going to come in and do their thing. So anyways, those are my comments and concerns about verbos.
All right, thank you, and I apologize, I am listening, because I'm typing.
That's okay.
And I'm listening, but...
There's some people here who've heard my comments, and I think I'm not alone in, in expressing concern about verbos.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Clare, five seven five Oak Street, I've addressed the board on the subject on short-term rentals before. Few things, I'm gonna outline a few things if I, if I could. So, all these, all these places, I will, I'm about the name here. Park Township, St. Clair Shores, Ann Arbor, Holland, Mackinac City, Spring Lake, Grand Haven, South Haven, New Buffalo, and Traverse City have all been short-term rentals this year, all of them. And I think probably there's some lessons to be learned from them in what they've experienced. On top of that, now at Indian River, I was just told this this past week, short-term rentals now outnumber residents. They have entire blocks of the community that are nothing but short-term rentals. If that isn't, if, all these are just signs, and, and I get it, I get private property rights, I get all of these different things, but when it starts, when it starts, um, when it starts affecting community, and, and if you can imagine this, working and saving, so you can afford a place to buy a place on a lake. And then you have short-term rental people who've been, that number one, don't care about you. They certainly don't care about the community, because if they don't care about you as a neighbor, they certainly aren't part of the community here. That should be just an outward sign that, I mean, they, it, it just needs to end, it just really needs to end. Um, right now, it's Wild West in, in Caledonia Township, it's a Wild West on short-term rentals. Um, one thing I'm amazed by is, in, in our current ordinance book, in section five, short-term rentals are listed there that they need a, I think, a plot, they need to go through NIC for plot approval. Are we enforcing that? I don't think so. The other thing was, this last, what was it, a couple of years ago when we were doing the master plan? We had, um, the, we had a survey that went out to the tri-townships that was about short-term rentals. Sixty-five percent of the people said highly regulate them or severely regulate them, and then there was, I don't know what it was, twenty-some odd percent or thirty percent said outward ban them. And there was no reaction to that, in fact, it was an opposite reaction, because when Nemco presented the final draft in there and explaining in section seven that you have the, they give it to every community in northern Michigan that they'd be planning for, it was about short-term rentals, and somewhere, somebody said, "We're not going to include them." It's mind-boggling, it's almost malicious, honestly. You know, um... You ask yourself why you live here, I'll ask everybody here, why do you live here? Peace, quiet, no traffic, all the different things, why are we importing the garbage that Mike just talked about? We're importing it, it's ridiculous, it really is. You know, and, and you know, even if I extend that, I think it was thirty percent of all the homes that were sold in the United States last year went into short-term rentals, is something I read, thirty percent. If, I don't know if you guys have kids, I do. Why, how are my kids going to compete on a mortgage or to buy a house when some, you know, out of, just a broader scale, when somebody's sitting there and they're competing against somebody who can offer thirty thousand or forty thousand dollars a year in mortgage payments because they're going to rent it out for a hundred and seventy dollars a night? It's impossible. Why are we doing that in our community? I mean, you read in the paper, I think it was a week ago, Alpena News are talking about they can't get professionals to move here because there's no housing stock, we have a housing crisis. And we don't have a housing crisis, we have a short-term rental crisis. I looked up on, uh, online, a hundred and fifty-seven houses in Alpena County on short-term rentals, and I ended up on a count, it's like a hundred and fifty-one. We're doing it to ourselves. And everybody sits there and says, "Oh, you know, we're going to do a survey, we're going to do this," shut those things down. You have the authority, you got all, all you have to do is pick up the phone, have Tim Fried call somebody at Traverse City or Mackinac City and say, "How'd you do it?" Not hard. It's not hard. You know, there, one, one last thing is, you know, the state recognizes short-term rentals as commercial properties. You can look it up, it's been in court a whole bunch of times, they've recognized them as commercial properties and we're allowing them to operate residential. Are we holding them to commercial standards, i.e., can, are they, are they being forced to put up fences? Barriers, commercial-sized barriers around a property? Nope. Do whatever they want, they can walk over to Mike's deck and have a party. Other thing we can, you can do is sit there and say, "Well, if I go decide I'm going to build a commercial fence on my property in R1, are you guys going to allow it?" Or is Nick going to come over and tell me I have to tear it down, even though I'm living, I'm living next to a recognized commercial property? The whole thing's mind-boggling to me. I don't know, I, I, I just wish you guys would, I mean, take some action, I know that you're working on a, you're working on a survey and that kind of thing, but I hope, I hope in some way, shape, or form, it delineates the people who are directly affected. If I lived out on Sucker Creek Road on ten acres, I wouldn't care if the guy next door had that, but this is the highest density of population in the township is what we're talking about. I don't know, I just hope, I hope something comes of it. Because I think, I think if it does, there'll be people, yep, they're going to be upset, but you know what? In the long run, I think if, if you do do something, people are going to thank you for it later on, I really do. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Lisa Lyons, I'm at five oh seven Oak Street, next to Mike down the road here. I'm relaxed up with what both of them have said, and I'd like to address like a danger, um, a couple of things that I've seen. My husband and I were swimming one summer out in the water, and we've got a cement ramp that goes down into the water. And this little, anybody that has been around those knows how slippery it is down in the water. This little girl came walking, she was what, four years old? And I just started screaming, "Stop!" Her parents stood there and went, "What, what, we're just, isn't this a rental? Aren't these all rentals?" And I said, "No, we live here, these are homes. We've quit maintaining our dirt road. As you come in off a Holiday Inn Road, people either slam their brakes or they speed up to get out. The potholes are terrible, we won't maintain them anymore, because it's the only way to slow people down." Also, the way some drive boats, not all, but the way some of them drive boats, I've got grandkids, and when they cut the docks, two, three docks over from where they're coming in, inside of buoys, come on. You know, if you're going to operate a boat, you need to know what you're doing, and they don't, and they don't care. So, that, that's my two cents in addition to the agreement.
You said your address is five zero seven, or?
Five zero seven.
Anyone else?
I'll say a couple of things, Suzie Morale, five nine five eight, Mount Moriah. I don't have my talking points ready, because I was trying to bring myself up to speed on the short-term rental. I don't see minutes online for any of the meetings for 2025. So I don't know what has been discussed up to this point. I am an owner of a short-term rental. It's a one-bedroom, it's very quiet, I don't have those issues. In fact, my neighbors don't even really know when I, when I have guests, because I rent to just individuals or couples, so it's very quiet. But I would like to find a happy medium between what you're discussing, which I can certainly sympathize with and understand. So I'm just here to, I haven't been to a few meetings, I like to bring myself up to speed on the minutes about where we are with the survey or restrictions. I live on the property, I'm there as the owner when it's being rented. I do have my own, I guess, what you would call rules and regulations, but, you know, the renters I have are usually very quiet. So, I guess I would like to find the happy medium between being able to continue renting and, you know, the sizes or restrictions of owners, residents being on the property of the rental, or, you know, I don't really know what all that other, the RBO rentals do in other areas, so I'm here to learn and to bring myself up to speed on where we are.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Is there a way I can get minutes from previous meetings, or I can run them online?
I gotta, I gotta, we'll have to find out.
Yeah, I see.
I know Barra actually keeps very good meeting minutes, just like you did.
Okay. I don't know why they're not posted, usually they would go right up online, I don't see any for the share.
I don't know, I think they need to be, probably, we just need to get them sent to the web administrator and the key one that puts them on there. So we'll check that out, though. Please? Anybody else? All right, my finger's got to work out there. Written correspondence, we did get... We got some correspondence from Nick that came to us, I sent that out to all you guys today, just so it was fresh in your mind, and then we responded back, and Denise responded back as far as... Somebody on a topic wanted us to try to answer some variance questions on something, and I said, "No, you gotta..." I, I responded saying, "No, you gotta come to us with an application before we even consider something as far as variance." And Denise agreed with me, that was one that I sent out today to you guys, to everybody, so. That was, I think, the only written correspondence, we did have one, I think, from you, was it you that sent something?
Yeah, it's me, yeah.
Yeah, but that was basically what you...
Yeah, most of what I said is that, there's a few other additional ones.
Yeah, so. So I'll make sure that that gets put into the record. Records, board trustees?
Board meets next Wednesday, ten fourteen.
That's next Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. That's it, ZBA, nothing, we haven't had a ZBA, anything happening over here, which is good. Either nobody's doing anything, or our ordinance is pretty solid. So, is there any administrator or anything? Welcome, Nick?
I don't think so, there was a portion, you and I had about roadside stands, did you guys make a determination on that?
We did look at that, um, we actually looked at that last meeting and we went through the ordinance and that whole schedule of allowable uses, we kind of looked through that a little bit, so I think if we, um... What we'll probably end up doing is doing a, we'll end up doing a public hearing if that, if we move forward. But some of that, we looked at several different things that we looked at, so. We'll have to try to designate or delineate those a little bit differently, so everybody can see of what we're looking at, so. Yeah, but we did bring that up, so. That was last meeting, so. Tri Township meeting, or Tri, Tri Township planning, we have a meeting on October sixteenth, which is next Thursday. It's at Coz Township, this meeting. We had our last meeting, it was flyest, but we, we had our last meeting here in June or July. One of the things that we are going to have to do is at that last meeting, Nemco gave us a, they said they were sending us a draft and they wanted us to, we have to, we have to have each of the respective township boards, um, move to approve for the master plan before they can have a public hearing. Nemco has a public hearing on behalf of all three townships, and they're trying to get that scheduled for the first part of December. But we just received, I just received the draft copy and I sent that out to, uh, planning commissions this week. So we're really not, I don't think we're going to be ready to have a December public hearing on this thing, I think it's going to end up waiting. Because we don't have time, because Elkhorn only meets every two months for planning commission.
It makes it that new quarter.
Nevermind, so. So I think that we'll prob, the master plan's probably going to get pushed back a little bit, because I don't think, I don't think it's in a position that we can move it forward. And we might be able to now, now that we have it, maybe that's something we could put on our November meeting, and then again, push it on to the board, but, um, and I don't know that there, I don't think there's anything changed, but they did change the format and other, which would be nice to look, have an opportunity to look at, so. So I think that's probably gonna get pushed back a little bit, probably till spring, I suspect, so. Anything else on that, you guys were at the last meeting. So, I don't think there's anything there. Moving on to new business, then, we have none, old business, ordinance updates. Yeah, ordinance updates, yeah. Yeah, well, we got, we got this draft for, um, just so everybody's aware, a couple of things, and I'll, I'll deal with short-term rentals here in a second, but, um, Nemco sent us, they, they're continuously working on solar, because I think solar is obviously pretty popular amongst a lot of communities in northern Michigan. And they sent us a proposed revision to the ordinance, um, less than a month ago. And that we passed out last, I passed out last month. And I don't know if you guys want to go through this, or if we should wait until we have a full planning commission. Yeah, so, I think so too, but I, I read through it, there's a couple of comments that I have on it that I think we should probably look at. Because they added, they added, it looks like they added more information as there, more projects are coming along. And I think the longer we wait, the more information we get, I don't know that there's any, I don't know that solar is coming anything soon in Caledonia. But we might as well wait as, I don't want to say as long as we can, but get as much information as we can. But some of this information that she added was probably pretty good information. So, um, there was a lot, there was a lot of things about safety that they added. Preventing people from getting into the solar farm, or the, I call them solar farms. Fire emergencies. I didn't go to the, some of you, I think, I, for fun, I sit and watch videos and I watched the fire department meeting, when was that? I think some of you guys were there a few months ago, when the fire chief at Austin Township, he had that in a public meeting, and they were talking about batteries and what happens to a power when it catches fire, and all they can do is bury it. So I got thinking about some of that stuff as I was reading some of these, and it looks like they are starting to take some of that into, um, consideration. But there's more information, or there's more items in here about training, training our fire departments how to handle a fire. Stormwater management, environmental stuff, what happens if one of these things breaks.
Groundwater contamination.
Yeah, so, yeah, groundwater studies, environmental studies. I think some of these are probably really good for us to, as we get into them a little bit, you know, keep studying these a little bit. And, uh, so I'll, I'll hold off on my additional comments on this until maybe we have a full planning commission that we can discuss it a little bit more. So, but with that, I think we kind of tabled that one. One of the other things that I, what that, I just pulled it up today, was last meeting we talked about, a couple of months ago, we had a special lane use come-in application. And when I was reviewing our ordinance as far as the procedures, um, I was a little bit surprised, because in my private world, before I retired, I would go to communities for special lane uses a lot in rezonings. And one of the things that I realized in our ordinance is that the planning commission is the ultimate decision-maker on site plans, which is normal, um, but also rezonings as well as special hand uses. And I'm just going to pick on solar for a minute, in my, in my opinion, uh, may not necessarily be everybody on this planning commission, but as an unelected person, not an elected official, I don't think I should be the one that actually makes a decision that could affect half of our township. So I just pulled down, um, I just picked one, this happened to be Lyon Township, which is downstate in Elkhorn County. And this is their applications and procedures. And under four point oh three C two, uh, I think that's where it was. They made, how we make recommendations, so what I would like to do is, I'd like to send this to Denise and see if she can, maybe draft some language to put into ours, and it might be the same or, maybe not, but to where we make recommendations to the board. And the board, as the elected officials, should be the ones making the decisions. I just don't feel like that we're at this, at our level here, with the exception of you, Anthony, you should be making those decisions on behalf of the whole township.
I did bring that up to the board last, this evening.
Okay, all right, I'm going to give these to you then, and you can pass them off. So, but if you guys are alright with that, I'm going to forward that to Denise and see if she'll show. So, I think, um, short-term rentals. I got my eye on that flyer right there. Just a little bit of an update, um, this planning commission, two, two months ago, um, we, we discussed the short-term rentals and what we wanted to do, in fact, I had a stack of, uh, earlier in the year, I gave everybody some homework and we all took it, areas. areas. Um, my stack here happens to be the Torch Lake area because I took that one. I think that had seven communities, seven townships, a village, and something else, maybe two villages. There's a lot. There's a big stack of paper. And we looked at all of the different ones. I don't can, had, you had Alcona, um, and you had, I can't remember who, any of your, yeah. Um, and I got, we got some information also on Lake Higgins and Bolton. And everybody is doing things differently, um, as far as the communities on what they're doing for short-term rentals. It is, and I think part of it is the fact that the state, a few, a couple of years ago, was going to do something and all the township waited to see what the state was doing. And the state hasn't done anything.
Hi, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
The Michigan Supreme Court this past summer did say that it's up to the township ordinances.
Okay.
They did not, so there, that, that housing bill or whatever that was floating around out there is basically dead.
It is.
There was some fight and, uh, Michigan Supreme Court basically has pondered it and basically saying, hey, do what you want, right? And that's part of that list, when I read you that list earlier, Dan, that was the response. So, it's those communities decided outright bans and they're done, right? And you're talking about huge markets, Traverse City, Mackinac City, I mean, big markets.
With, with that in mind, what we've done is, um, two months ago, there was a motion to do a study, the survey, not a study, do a survey, the survey, our residents, everybody. So, it's not just, this is one of our bigger audiences that we've had in a while. Um, and we know what happens when we do surveys. Uh, we get a few back, not that many. Um, but we did put together some questions that, um, for a survey and we sent that after our last meeting, we sent it to Denise at NEMCOG. Um, unfortunately, we haven't gotten anything back from her as far as the survey. Um, I know that, we know that our last Tri Township meeting, that was the, that was the last meeting that Denise's assistant, who handles our township, she changed jobs and I don't know that she's been replaced yet. And we've had, I've had a couple of correspondences with Denise that haven't been responded to. The last one I had, we had, I sent something back to Nick's and Denise was copying on it and she got back to us maybe in a week. So, she's a busy gal. So, I'm hoping that here in the next couple of weeks, we'll get something back from her and get a survey out so that we can hear back from everybody. And just so you know, we did, uh, some of the questions on the survey were, we can't say if you're a resident, you can take the survey. If you're not a resident, you can't take the survey. But some of the questions were pertaining to that because we can filter out, um, who's answering the questions based on some of the questions. So, um, so that, that's going to be coming, I suspect that we, that better be up by the neck, by our next meeting, by November. And maybe we'll leave it up for a month or so. So, everybody can have, we'll try to get Denise or Cindy to post it on, I love Hubbard Lake, and push it out to that, to her mailing list too. Um, we have, over the last few months, this is the most we've heard from you folks. And we don't like short-term rentals. Um, in the past, there's been a lot of, we're okay with short-term rentals. So, I'm glad to, I'm glad to hear the input. Um, and I think I could probably speak for all of us. It's like, when I first started, I think we were probably thinking one way and then we started thinking another way and it's, it's confusing because that's a tough situation.
It's tough for the residents.
It's, it's tough and depending on, I, I understand.
You know, I mean, if you can imagine, not to interrupt, but if you can imagine working and saving your whole life so you can buy a place on that lake, okay? And then all of a sudden, and your summer's twelve weekends long and you can't wait for fall. I want you to envision that because that's what's going on around. And you know, I said, so when the, when the planning commissioner, you know, Dan, and, and with all respect, goes out and really, I really want, really, hopefully you pay attention to what the, 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 the residents on the lake have to say because they're the ones dealing with it. It's not somebody over off of Sucker Creek Road or someplace else. It's the people, it's the highest, highest density you guys have, like I said, in residential one. It's those people that are, and probably the highest tax revenues that the township has in R1.
Yeah, we just asked that you fairly look at all these factors.
Yes.
I, I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to stop you there, just so you understand. I am also a lakefront resident. I own property on the lake. I had a short-term rental right next door to me. I have a very high potential of another one on the other side of me. I understand your situation. I also hear the situation from other people on the other side. Um, I've, I've heard things from many different directions. Um, and I, maybe my, my statement earlier about being confused is incorrect. It's, my statement should have been, I want to learn more information on how it can, how this can be handled. Um, regardless of what happens, we see right now, Teldonia is kind of a free, I, I'm going to call it a free-for-all for lack of a better term because there's not many regulations.
Yeah.
Alcona looked at it three months ago, two months ago. Uh, they were, we don't want any. They have, I'll call them underground, short-term rentals. They looked at it, uh, for a short time. They said, nope, we're not allowing any of them. It's, these are our neighbors. Uh, we understand. I understand both perspectives. People like Suzie. There's people that inherit property that can't afford it. Um, what do you want to do? So, we understand all of this. What we're trying to do is trying to be diligent. It's not going quickly. This is not a one-meeting decision. Um, but it was, there was a motion made a couple of months ago to do the survey and respectfully, we're going to do the survey and get information because that helps us get more. Um, if that survey, I suspect, gets completed by our December meeting, we'll probably start deliberating on that a little bit more. And that's when you'll start seeing something take place. And I don't know how our planning commission is going to react to it because we hear both sides.
In, in the interest of order.
I, I appreciate. Let me, let me just keep going. Um, but we're going to leave it at that. And I, I, I respect the fact that I, I hear all of you. What I would like to do is that, especially when we start deliberating this and what we do with it, I'm not sure which way it's going to go, but we want your input. Um, and I would say that the way that it's looking right now, probably December, January, February, is going to be a really good time that we're going to be looking for input from everybody, just based on the way I think it's, it's going right now.
Thanks for that. Sorry if I interrupted you.
That's all right. Um, Nick has kind of given us, um, some input from what a couple of other communities are doing, um, and given us some ideas because he's been doing a lot of research on it. And I think that at some point, we'll get our ideas together and kind of format something. And then this will probably end up going into the township's attorney and it will be drafted as an ordinance that won't be part of our zoning ordinance. It's going to be something totally separate. Uh, we were asked to look at it by our township board because it's, it's at this level that it should be. Um, and when, you know, when we come to it then, we'll send a recommendation back to the board and I suspect the board will have the township attorney either draft something or, and then we'll start seeing public hearings on it. So, um, so that's, that's where it's at right now. And I, I appreciate the fact that you want to get something done. We're just not quite there yet. So, because we want to be diligent about it. So, all right. And I hope you understand our position.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we, we are on, we are on big salaries here too. So.
I know. I wish so.
You were here.
I was there.
All right. With that in mind, anybody else have anything? We don't have anything. Um, our, our next meeting is November tenth, for deer season. And we have a Tri Township meeting a week from Thursday. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
See, got a motion? Got a second. Up here, Seth? All right. Have a good evening.